Pastor from First Baptist Church, Mr. Seaborn is here to do the invocation. And I've asked Commissioner Gruber to do the pledge of allegiance. Pastor, thank you.
Thank you. I invite you to pray with me. Love and Father, we just are grateful for this day. It's such a blessing to always be able to pray for your people. It's what I ask for every morning, and I thank you for this crowd and for these commissioners that are here today. And I just ask your blessing on all the work that's going to come here, always, Lord, with the right intent, that we look to serve others above ourselves, and so that each person is just gifted with that desire to do the right things. I do thank you for these commissioners, for the service they give, the dedication they have. But in all things today, Father, we just ask for wisdom and discernment. Many, many important things happen here, and it takes an otherworldly wisdom to know the right way to go. You're the one that provides that. We thank you for it. And so just ask again, your blessing to fall on this room for guidance, and that you would direct it in such a way that you get glorified in it. We thank you for this day, the day you created, wasn't promised, but was given. And just ask that we would return all glory back to you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
From First Baptist Church of Pharaohs, thank you. All right, Commissioners, we got adoption of the minutes.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the adopt the minutes of our July the 1st, 2025 regular meeting.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Commissioner Ball, the payment of the bills.
Yes, sir. I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we pay the bills.
Second. I'm seconding that.
I got a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any further discussion, Commissioner? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve BA 2.
And I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second to approve BA 2. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Then we got the consent.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda that was discussed in the work session, including the noted items that are on here, which is
Second.
CO7 and the correction on that one, which is about school system.
Got a motion, and I've heard Commissioner Ball with a second. Any further discussion on the consent? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right, we got a discussion on GA 1. Frank?
All right. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
All right, a common theme we've been working on over the last few months, and meaning the room may have seen some of the previous presentations, have been about our 30 Cube program. So today, I'm very pleased to announce that we have project number four teed up under this program. And a brief introduction for those that may not have heard about 30 Cube to know what it is. It's a program that the Commission launched earlier this year, and it encourages collaboration between the county and municipalities throughout the county. All 14 have an opportunity, it's on a voluntary basis, for roadway infrastructure improvements. The primary focus is on connectivity and capacity. Anytime we can incorporate multimodal items such as multi-use trails, or access management, or safety components, and also improve capacity of our roadway network, our entire roadway network on a regional basis, then that's what we're trying to do here. So again, the fourth project that's being brought to you today is from the city of Spanish Fort, and they have brought an excellent project to the table. I will kind of jump into the details. It is a, what we call the Old Highway 31 roadway and pedestrian improvement. So for those that are familiar with the US 31 corridor near Spanish Fort, you understand how difficult that can be to navigate and travel, especially during peak hours around school times of entering and exiting during the work mornings and afternoons. So kind of move in, just jump straight to the map here. So if you draw your attention to the screen, the area you see shaded in green here is the corporate limits, the municipal annex limits of the city of Spanish Fort. To the west, the pinkest area is Daphne. So on this map, this is just east of the Eastern Shore Center and just south of US 31. So that congested area there, and those, like I said earlier, if you try to navigate onto US 31 and off of US 31, you don't understand how difficult it is. So Old Highway 31 is just east, it's off of, it stands off of US 31, it's just east of Highway 181, and it is just east of the Eastern Shore Boulevard, and that is the signal that feeds off of 31 into the Eastern Shore Center. So just give them a little context of the location. So on the map here, you'll see the western connection of Old Highway 31, there's a dot on the map. Any of you that have tried to access US 31 from that point know how difficult and unsafe that can be. So that has been a concern for many years. We've coordinated with the city of Spanish Fort, we've coordinated with Aldot, and have worked on solutions and different options of how we could make that function better. Old Highway 31 is a county road, and obviously US 31's a state road. Well, in the course of those conversations, Spanish Fort come to us and said, hey, we're getting complaints and concerns as well, and we want to bring an idea forward that make it help with not only the safety of that intersection, but continue to help move traffic in east and west fashion, get it into the Spanish Fort, or into the Eastern Shore Center a little better. And if we can do that, we can then funnel the traffic to a signalized intersection and minimize these safety concerns at Old 31. Very intriguing ideas. They brought a design to us, and we went through a few iterations and tweaked it with them. And so here's what we're going to provide. What you see shown, and I'll go into some more detail in a minute, but what you see shown in red is the proposed roadway alignment. There is currently no roadway in this location. So this will, again, allow an additional connection that does not exist today from Old Highway 31 into the Eastern Shore Center to Eastern Shore Boulevard. Move forward a little bit. Okay, this is a little bit of a busy drawing, but I'm going to kind of work our way through it. Let's start up at US Highway 31. What we will do with that intersection is a ride-in and ride-out. So the biggest issue is people trying to make left turns on 231, and just not being able to navigate that safely. So that will be converted to a ride-in and ride-out intersection. But it will allow traffic, another access point, if you look just south of the bubble there, I'm sorry, the pointer don't work on the screen here, but it will allow an access off of US, Old Highway 31 into a roundabout intersection, and then progress westerly over to Eastern Shore Boulevard. And if those that's kind of familiar with the area, this is right near the bowling alley, through a vacant, currently vacant lot there. Also in this conversation, the need for an additional Bratz transit hub in Spanish Fort has been brought forward. And that's a huge need, and we've needed that for a long time there. We've strategized where that needs to be. Well, we factored that into this conversation, and so the roadway just kind of progresses east there, and you'll see a bubble where it's got the potential Bratz transit hub. The city has graciously offered to factor that into their master plan with other things they're looking at, donate some property there to allow for the future development of a Bratz transit hub. And our public transit system with the Bratz Department is growing by leaps and bounds, and as we continue to grow as a county, as a whole, public transit is going to continue to be a bigger, play a bigger role in our transportation network. So we're very excited to be able to discuss a new hub location. So the point we're here to talk about today is building the roadways that will tie all this together. That is what 30 Cubed is about. And so through this partnership and through 30 Cubed, the city will pay 50% of the roadway cost, all cost design. Rightaway will be donated for this project. That's a very good win. Some multimodal, multi-use trails will be built in, some lighting for safety, roundabout, help manage traffic at what will be a very busy intersection. And so they will pay 50% of that. 30 Cubed from the county side will pay the other 50%. So it's a great partnership. The roadway network is a total of 7.1 million, with the county paying half, the city paying half. And then upon completion, the city will take over maintenance of everything inside the corporate limits, which is pretty much the entire project description I've just mentioned. Maybe one little small portion of roadway that's outside the city currently that the county would retain. So it's a good deal for the county, good deal for the city. More importantly, it's a good deal for our citizens.
Excellent.
So we'll go back to the US Highway 31 intersection, just show a little bit what I'm talking about by ride-in and ride-out. This is a drone shot that we took earlier this week of current condition. Obviously, school's out, so you don't see the traffic like you'd normally do when school's in session, however. And if you notice on the screen, you see a rendition of the ride-in and ride-out. And those that travel up and down the state roads, you've seen a lot of these style intersections that's come online recently, and it's greatly improved the safety. So access management's a big component of what we do in keeping our citizens safe.
So Frank, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
On that right there, you cannot take a left out of there?
That is correct.
Awesome. So no more cut-throughs to try to beat traffic?
Yes, sir.
Great.
So.
Because people use Old Highway 31 to cut through, to beat the line of traffic, and what happens is, is when they, they're risking their lives taking that left and almost causing wrecks every single day. And this is, just that improvement alone is great.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right. And we couldn't, we've looked at this option for a long time, but we couldn't do this scenario without some other form of an outlet. Now the traffic can get to an actual signalized intersection, and it's just a short loop around. It's a win-win all the way around.
Good deal.
So with that, that's kind of enough about the details of the project. I'm going to introduce the agenda item, GA 1, and then before we take a vote, I'd like for Mayor McMillan to be able to come up and say a few words.
Sure.
So the item is the 30 Cubed Program, Intergovernmental Roadway Construction Agreement with the City of Spanish Fort for certain roadway improvements. Approve an intergovernmental roadway construction agreement between the Baldwin County Commission and the City of Spanish Fort for roadway improvements connecting Eastern Shore Boulevard to Old Highway 31, contingent upon the approval of the agreement by the City of Spanish Fort. This will, once it goes through this meeting, the city council will take action. So with that, Mayor McMillan.
Thank you, Frank.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. How are you?
Hope everybody's having a great start of the day. You know, everything's good. You got a good crowd. Y'all may be here for a little while. I'm glad I'm first. So I want to thank the Commissioners for this 30 Cube program. This means a lot to the cities, to the county. It's all about moving traffic. It's all about making things safe. So we're very proud of that. The partnership between the county and the city, this is a wonderful thing. It improves our roadway capabilities, capacity, and connectivity, and thus the important parts of it. The 30 Cube program will also add much-needed funding to help us all accomplish what we're trying to accomplish here. So we're very proud of that. I want to thank a lot of folks for this. This has been a project we've worked on for a while, three years minimum. City Council, I want to thank them, Cooperative Improvement District, the Eastern Shore Center lanes, Butch and Sonia Cole, they donating property to get us to the Eastern Shore Center, which is quite a lump of money there, to be honest with you. Mavis Plantation is a partner in this, and Lewis Sterling, and of course Sawgrass Consulting has been right there with us the whole way, trying to make this all work, Ursula Godwin and them. You know, this will improve the transportation of numerous residents and businesses in this area, not to mention the safety aspect that it's definitely going to improve. Capacity issues will be improved on 31 without a doubt, and it'll allow future connections for perhaps some other roads down the way where we can take it all the way around, bring it back into 31. We already had conversations with some property owners down there to perhaps make that a big loop coming back into Coleman Lane, to make that all the way a circle around, which would be great. You know, the proposed Bratz hub is a quality of life thing. It's going to move some folks. It's going to be good. And we've been wanting one of those in Spanish Fort for a while also. So, you know, we're going to build some facilities back there, regional baseball, softball, soccer facility kind of thing, a miracle field for our youth that need that, walking trails. These improvements will assist in bringing customers to the retail stores, and of course, help the residents on Old 31, and of course alleviate some issues on 31. So thank you again for this proposed project, and we certainly appreciate the 30 Cube program. It is very meaningful to us.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say this before we do the vote, because I want to thank the Commission and our staff too for putting this out there, coming up with this, and for us to do this. Because it does help all the citizens in Baldwin County, regardless if you live in the city or the county. And I just want to stress that. And I appreciate the partners with the other mayors that came to us, and that we got a partnership with them too already. So I just want to say thank you for bringing this up too.
Well, no, thank y'all for entertaining it. Number one, this program is great for the county. And it's not just for us. Again, we're going to
No, it's right, for the whole county.
But it's going to affect everything we do. And of course, we're all trying to move traffic. We all try to make things quality of life, safety, all those things. And these are all factors in this 30 Cube program helps us get there.
I just want to say that also hats off to the staff for coming up with this. This is an unprecedented program that I don't think we've seen anybody else do, and we hope to be the flagship to set a precedent all over the state, and the southeast, and anywhere else, even nationwide. But this is where the County Commission is showing how that we are partnering and collaborating with our 14 municipalities. Every municipality has the opportunity. And since we do have a nice big room full of people here, I get an opportunity to say this, this is not just for the larger municipalities. We, last meeting, we signed an agreement with Magnolia Springs, and I don't even have to tell you to think the difference in the budgets of those small municipalities. And so this is not just for one, or two, or three, or four. This is, you know, first come, first served. And if it's that great, we'll try to look for some money to continue. I mean, I'm going out on a limb with that. We probably can't call it 30 Cube. We come up with more than 30. But anyways, I don't care what we have to call it. This is a great partnership, and I appreciate you guys for wanting to do it with us. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Frank, to you and your staff, and everybody involved, the Commission and this program. It seems like every time you come up here, and we've got another one of these, you got to introduce the 30 Cube program. And so we're going to get a lot of those, I have a feeling. And Mayor, thank you and the City of Spanish Fort for partnering with us, because it is a partnership. And, you know, a lot of people kind of lose sight sometimes. Us as a commission, we only represent the rural aspects of the county and let the mayors take care of their cities, but that's not true at all. And this is just an example of how we're partnering with municipalities in this and making things work together. And thank y'all. Thank the Commissioner for foresight to move these kind of projects forward. We didn't have these options a few years ago. And with your wisdom moving this forward, it's a great thing for our county, not just for Spanish Fort. It's a great thing for all of us, and we need to recognize that.
Yes. Well, you know, this fits in with our master plan of what we're trying to help with infrastructures. Because we realize that infrastructure is our number one issue that we have, is moving traffic. As you know, we've been discovered, and if you'll ride down 59, or 98, or even a Beach Express, you'll find out that we have been, we have been found. You know, and the traffic counts are huge. And we still, and we're trying to make some connectivity for our local residents so that they can get around and not have to worry about a lot of this traffic congestion. And it's, I think it's a plan that's going to work very well, creating this plan. And Frank and the staff all came up with this 30 Cube, and which incorporated the municipalities, and that's great, because, you know, that's what we need to move. You know, it's not so much to pump the traffic in the county, but it's a lot of when you go into the municipality, because most everybody has to go into municipality shop or whatever, and so it adds that much more traffic to these roadways. And so I'm just glad you brought this forward to us, because I think this is going to be a great project, you know.
Hey, Mayor, while I got you here, I don't know who was responsible for getting Aldot's attention, but y'all have finally cut the middle lane into not a freeway anymore. And whoever came up with that idea is brilliant. Well, I'll commend the chief. He and I have had conversations about the issues. We actually did a traffic count, and I'm getting off subject here. We did a traffic count one morning, just did a survey, how many cars were bypassing people and going down that center lane and riding it forever. Within, just for the morning school traffic, we had over 102 cars do it. That was crazy. So it had to get fixed. It just had a bad wreck right there in front of the apartment. So it's serving its purpose now, so nobody can use it as a freeway anymore. They're going to run over all those things. You know how it works. Some of them will be happy and some won't. That's right. That's a good, that's a good concept. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Frank, too. And if y'all didn't know, Frank is our county engineer, so I wanted y'all to be aware of that. He's our county engineer.
I make a motion that we adopt item GA 1.
I'd like to get that motion.
All right, got a motion and a second to adopt GA 1. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right, we got the retiree recognition. I promise you, we'll get to the planning and zoning.
Well, we only 20 minutes in. We'll get there one day.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we only have one retiree this month, and she's, of course, she's, all of them are near and dear to our heart. Rhonda Wilson with the Highway Department is especially near and dear to us all. So we're going to have Mark Ackerman and the crew come up here with Rhonda to recognize her 20 years of service to the County Commission.
Yeah, that's awesome.
So we have
So we have, you have employees, and then you have those employees that are looked up to and are mentors to the rest of our team. And that's what Ms. Rhonda is. Ms. Rhonda has, she said 20, but she's only one month shy from hitting 21 years. So I'm going to say 21 years. But she is the one, our other, all of the other girls in the other barns, if they've got a question, if they don't know how to, you know, how do we handle something like this? Something comes in that's unexpected. I guarantee you, Ms. Rhonda's already dealt with it before. And she's, she's been a fantastic mentor to them. And I'm hoping I can convince her, maybe, come back and continue to be a mentor in a different capacity. But we're, we're surely going to miss her. She has been a phenomenal asset for the residents of Baldwin County for a very long time, and she's very near and dear to each and every one of us. And I'm going to let some of the guys that have the pleasure of working with her on a daily basis say a few words.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We're here today to celebrate the retirement of a valued member of our team, Ms. Rhonda Wilson. We're deeply grateful for Ms. Rhonda's years of dedication and service to Baldwin County. And throughout her career, she has constantly demonstrated dedication, leadership, and always a positive, loving attitude.
Always.
We especially appreciate Ms. Rhonda for, for being the heart of our team. And if I could have a dollar for every phone call she's taken from a citizen or a work order she's created, then I could retire with her.
That's right.
We wish you the best retirement, Ms. Rhonda.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for this, and it's like part of my purpose is gone, but I plan on coming back, just not as much. I've got, and where I can enjoy my retirement. So I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right. [applause]
She remembers, but we all, you know, we went to school together. She was a few years older.
Not that old.
But we went, we went to school together in Fairhope, and, you know, and then I became a state trooper, and I used to come by your office at the barn and just talk to you, what can we do? And so you've helped me and the citizens of Baldwin County. And I just want to say this, thank you for what you do for the citizens here and for Baldwin County as a whole. Because I used to love going by there and talking to you and telling me what I needed to do and what I need to look for, you know. But I just want to say thank you, and please enjoy your retirement.
That's the biggest part of my job, was to help.
It was.
Try to do it every which way I could.
You're right.
But thanks.
You're welcome.
Wait, 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 wait.
Hang on, Rhonda. We got other commissioners want to say something. You ready to go?
Well, I'm just, we'll let you go. I just want to say thank you. You know, as, when I came in as a commissioner in 2018, and then all those calls that come in, not too many of them escalate all the way up to our office, but you guys have always handled it. And a lot of times they don't need to talk to us. They just jump a bunch of ladders. But you guys handle it so well, and you do such a good job, and I appreciate it. Because anytime you've always copied me on the work orders and, and I try to use the train of command process. I don't like to trump what you guys, because you guys, I remember, oh, I think it was back in, was it 2021? It was a really rainy season, kind of similar to this one. And I remember the engineer telling me that we had like 100 calls on like a Monday morning because of some of the situations. And I'm sitting here going, before you even start work, you're dealing with that kind of stuff. And just, just thank you, because we are all here to serve, and you guys are the boots on the ground that really helped get it going. So thank you.
Ms. Rhonda, thank you so very much for, you know, all your years of service. You've always been there, you know, for, for the citizens and also for the employees. You've seen a lot of changes.
Yes.
And, but, you know, and you have, you've been a godsend to that, that barn, Area 200, with all your knowledge that you brought to it and, you know, and able to keep control of the paperwork. You know, Rhonda's a paperwork person, and I'll tell you what, the paperwork that she had to do is tremendous amount of paperwork. And she made sure that the employees did their part to make sure that we could keep accurate records in what we do. Thank you so very much. You know, because that's, that's a very hard job to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda, for your service to not only Baldwin County, but the citizens of Baldwin County and all the employees that you deal with on a day-to-day basis. Just by the conversations they have about you, you're definitely going to be missed, and we appreciate all of your work. Seems like you're retiring today, like, because of the way you're going to get out of here. So if that's the case, then congratulations and enjoy your retirement. Don't, don't do like all these other people doing work too hard on your retirement.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm going to retire.
You're going to retire, retire.
Enjoy.
All right. So enjoy it, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, we're done. Thank you, Rhonda. All right, we're up to planning and zoning on the public hearings. I wanted to express this. If you're here to speak on a group, you've got five minutes. If you're just, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Frank. Go ahead. Yes, Alain, sorry. I always do this. I go too fast.
That's okay. We're almost done, and we can get to good stuff here in a minute. So just really quick, just a few weeks ago, we recognized another group of retirees. In that group was our Parks Director and the Assistant Parks Director. So with today's action and through the consent agenda, we have hired, the commission has hired its new Director of Parks and Recreation. So under any good organization, good agency structure, yes, we recognize and acknowledge those that have served before us and then, but we also recognize and acknowledge and plan for those that we reload with. So we're very excited to welcome Caleb Hacker as Baldwin County's new Director of Parks and Recreation. So I won't go on too long about that. Caleb, we went through a very intense interview process. He can share that if he would like. That's up to him. But Caleb has got the fundamentals, the character traits, the credentials, everything we look for, the complete package in a department leader. So we're welcoming Caleb Hacker.
Thank y'all commissioners. Just put a face with a name. I'm so thankful for this opportunity. Just a little bit about myself, I've got a wife, three kids, six-year-old, four-year-old, two-year-old. See, y'all pray for me.
Yes.
But it's just a tremendous opportunity, not only for me, but for them. I've been praying for a long time for a position like this, and the Lord's opened this door for me, so I'm excited for what the future will hold.
We look forward to it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Mr. Hacker, and I know the citizens don't realize this, but, you know, the commission doesn't get involved on the employment with this gentleman. And, but I did reach out to Frank. I don't mind telling Frank, y'all this, but I said, Frank, I want somebody, I know, I know what he's going to pick, but I wanted somebody that's going to treat people like they want to be treated and take care of our parks and have that good character about them. And he did. So he's found somebody, so I'm very proud of that, so.
Thank you for applying.
But anyway, now we're getting to the planning and zoning. It's the public hearing part. Like I said at the beginning, when I, if you're here on a group, you get to speak for five minutes. If you're here individually on a topic or a case, you have three minutes. With this amount of people that we have in here, I'm going to have to, when it's three minutes and it goes off, I'm going to have to cut you off. I'm not being rude. I just, we got other people that want to speak. You do the same thing with the five minutes. I'm going to have to cut you off and say, thank you, we got to go to the next person. So I just wanted to let you know that, so kind of get it together. Selena, go ahead. Thank you.
The next two cases I'm going to present together, it's for a rezoning and a PRD. Trying to expand this. All right. The subject, hang on. My computer froze up. Hang on one second.
Technology. We have it too.
All right. There we go. Okay. As I stated, this is for rezoning and a PRD in the Point Clear area. The subject property that we're looking at is located in Planning District 26. It's located on the west side of County Road 3 and north of County Road 24. They are proposing 126-unit planned residential development with a golf course. The subject property is currently zoned RA. The applicant is asking that a portion of that be rezoned to RSF-1. The total lots requested is 126. The smallest lot that they are proposing is about 3,300 square feet. The proposed density combined with the RA and the RSF-1 is 0.42 units an acre. The RSF-1 allows 1.4 units an acre, and the RA density allows 0.33 units per acre. They have exceeded the open space requirement. They're proposing 233 acres of open space, and 169 of that will be usable. They have submitted a traffic study and some drainage study that our permit engineer has reviewed. Here's the locator map. You can see the, the subject properties are surrounded by RA zoning, and to the east side is District 17, which is unzoned. The proposed 126-unit development is on 310 acres, and it's going to be known as Point Clear Golf Club. This development will be considered a large-scale planned development and is seeking conceptual site plan approval. Large-scale, large-scale planned development is occupying at least 250 continuous acres or more, and is, and is under unified control and is planned and developed as a whole, single development operation. They include amenities such as wellness center, pools, dining venues, walking trails, and also there is an 18-hole golf course. The lot sizes range from 4,342 square feet to about one acre. The master plan shows this area as moderate development density and also rural agriculture and low-impact development. Here is the Flume map. All right, this is the rezoning map that shows what area is to remain RA, and that's 219 acres. And then the yellowish-orange area is what they're asking to be rezoned, and this is about 90.87 acres. Here is the overall master plan that they have. We are only, today we are only looking at the west side of County Road 3, because that's located in Planning District 36. And on the west side, as I stated, there's about 310 acres. And approximately 237 acres on this, in Planning District 17 on the east side, with a total of 548 acres, which will be the overall development. This is their proposed phasing plan. They have Phase 1, 1A, and Phase 2. Here's some of their lot layouts. The lots that will be located in the RA zoning, there's two different types, ranging from 10,000 to 7,000 square feet. The RA requirements is a minimum of three acres, but with a PRD, as long as you meet the density, you can have less, a smaller size lot in width. Here's the RSF-1 zone lots that they're proposing. There are several different types. The RSF-1 requires 30,000 square feet with 100 feet in width. Their lot sizes range from 4,000 or 4,300 up to one acre in the RSF-1. This is their site data table and their utility providers. This is their open space plan. You can see they have the wetlands shown. The darker green is all the open space. And this is their site circulation plan, which shows most of their, pretty much all their interest is off of County Road 3. This is their inspiration plan. This is what they plan on the whole development looking like. And staff has recommended approval of the rezoning from RA to RSF-1. And staff also recommends approval of the PRD with the following conditional, following conditions listed below.
Can you go, can you pull back the map where the, it would be the west side of US 98 and County Road 24, that piece of property? How many acres do you remember that was? I can't remember.
Which?
The one, it's, not the rezoned part, but the one to the east.
East and 17.
The one that's going to join that piece of property.
Something like you're saying.
How many acres?
237 on the east side.
Okay. 237, okay. That's in District 17, and that is, okay.
Correct.
Commissioners, y'all got any more? Y'all got any questions? Any questions for staff? All right. Hearing none? Open up the public hearing. Jay?
Yes, Sharon, we have two people signed up, but before we get to the public, we do have Trey Genright here, who's the authorization for the applicant.
All right.
Give a little presentation.
Sorry, Trey.
Good morning. I'm Trey Genright. I'm with Jay Consulting. I'm here on behalf of the McLean family and the Daniel Corporation. You know, I've been practicing engineering in Baldwin County for 20-something years and done a lot of really fun projects and a lot of ones that I'm proud of, but I will tell you that this one really kind of sets the bar on opportunities that I see as, as a citizen of the area. You see a lot of people that try to go and meet the code and what the minimum is and try to max out properties. This one, as you've presented to before, is clearly not doing that. The group, the development group's got a vision they're trying to develop. And if any of you that's traveled around in a lot of really nice tourist areas or resort communities, I didn't even know something like this existed until a few years ago. A really high-end golf course, a place where people that go and live are ones that create jobs, these people that work for major corporations, these people that'll actually use this brand-new FBO that the city fair hopes put in as a job creator. It's a huge asset in my mind for the Baldwin County, and so I appreciate the opportunity to even present this before you, and I appreciate the opportunity that you guys can listen to us. Imagery up here is, is representing the vision. I'm a local engineer here in town, but we have Niket Group, which is a originally recognized architectural design firm. They do spectacular things. These images up here are visions of things that they actually build and design. The golf course designer on this team is Fazio. Mr. Fazio is the architect, the golf course architect for Augusta National. He has designed over 200 courses worldwide and over 40... And over 40 of them are recognized as the best courses in the United States. So this is a real treasure to be part of this team. And I appreciate the opportunity for them to consider this piece of property. So this slide here is a project that the Daniel team just recently completed. It's called the High Hampton. And it's in Cassiers, North Carolina. It was a unique piece of property with facilities that were ready to transition into something else. And so they saw a vision of creating a facility, not unlike the Grand Hotel. Build a golf course in there. There's residential houses around there. And it's first-class. And so this one's wrapping up. And they were looking at where do we go next? And where's another opportunity to their, and the McLean family was introduced to them. And so this is how we are here today. This is a project that we've been working on, you know, nearly a year. We've worked with staff. We've met with commissioners over the year. And we have met with local citizens many times to talk about the vision of this project. Project totally is 500, right under 548 acres. The PRD is in the zone district, which is everything west of County Road 3. And that's really what we're voting on today, is the property west of County Road 3. But I should mention that, you know, the overall project will incorporate 548 acres. There's 230-odd acres on the east side of County Road 3, between County Road 3 and 98. As this project's developed over the year, there was a similar project or a prior development that was approved on 160 acres of that 230 that had 300 and something units on there. We have been able to come into contract to acquire that development. And so those 338 units will no longer be developed. And it will be incorporated into this project under a much less dense project. So everything on the west side, although it's not part of your formal approval today, will, you know, greenlight the development on the east side and cement that plan over there. Master plan of the project, so everything on the, there's a line down the middle kind of represents County Road 3. The PRD, as we're for today, is everything on the west side. The project I was mentioning too, the property on the east side is represented there as well. The RA, as the staff is representing, you know, allows .33 units an acre. We're at .41, so that's why we've got the small rezoning in there. But even with that, the allowable density would be 200 units on this property. Everything on the west, per our request, but we're only asking for 126. So in essence, the PRD that we're asking for today is really just to cluster some lots and create some reduced setbacks in lot size. That's all we're really looking for and asking for today. The PRD with the varying lot sizes allows us to create this type product. We can't do it under straight R1 zoning or R2 zoning. We need some flexibility and setbacks to be able to create this. So that's what we're looking for. This is pictures of kind of how the club would go together. And then also then, you know, this is just a follow-up. If you've got any questions or, you know, I know I don't want to take this too long, but if anything comes up, I'm here to happy to answer as needed.
Commissioners?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, good to hear. Well, thank you, Trey.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Two publics signed up. The first is Mike Sossier, the adjacent landlord.
I'll open up the public hearing. Yeah, you're here on a group, aren't you?
No.
Are you here individually?
Individually. My wife, I'm representing my wife, Kathy, and myself. We live on County Road 3, about a golf shot from this particular project. We have been active in trying to get our area zoned unsuccessfully. We have been active in warding off some high-density developments in this area. One of our neighbors is here to attest to that, that bought some property and just built a new polo field. So we are, we have 110 acres. My wife first started buying property 30 years ago. She bought her first 20. And we're very excited about this low-density, high-quality project, particularly the part that takes away 340 track homes. Even though it's a great builder, was involved in that, takes that off the market and puts a golf course and a lot of green space near us. So we are supportive of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second speaker just informed me that he did not want to speak now. So no one else has signed up.
All right. So nobody else signed up? Is anybody that's here that came in late that wants to speak on this case? All right, hearing none now. Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve case Z 25/17, McLean Property rezoning.
All right, you got a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Got a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, also, I'd like to make a motion that we approve case number PRD 25-03.
Can we?
Point Clear, this is all together, same thing. The Point Clear Club planned residential development, conceptual site plan approval.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to approve the case number PRD 25-03. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do y'all want to stick around or y'all going to leave?
You can stick around if you like.
More than welcome to. Thanks, Trey, for the presentation. Yes, sir?
No. Good. Hey, hello? We still got a county commission meeting. I need y'all to ease on out the door. I know. They're going, they're going. Go ahead, Ms. Corey.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is case Z 25-29, Wolf Creek Industries Incorporated property. Their request is to rezone from RA to RSF-1. Here's the location of the property within the county. It's located north of US Highway 90 and south of Price Scrubs Road in the Elsinore community. This is in Planning District 12. The total acreage is about 40 acres. And the applicant's request is to rezone for residential use. There was no letters or emails supporting or opposing the rezoning case. Here's the adjacent property images. Here's the locator map and the site map. The property is surrounded by RA zoning as well as RSFE to the west. And the land uses are residential, and there is some agriculture to the south. In terms of staff analysis, this planning district was adopted, had adopted zoning in November of 2006. There have been some changes in local conditions since the adoption. Some of the areas surrounding the property have transitioned from agricultural use to a more residential land use. The future land map also designates this area as predominantly moderate development potential. The homes are, the properties around the area are zoned for rural or estate-sized lots. Many of these properties do exhibit lot sizes similar to what is requested for the RSF-1. And staff believes that the residential request complies with the land uses in the vicinity and conforms to the master plan. And staff's recommendation of this request is approval.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions?
I don't.
I do. By looking at the overall version of this, I know this area really is pushing for less density. And I know some people consider RSF-1 less dense. But it is, there is other lots in the vicinity. There is, you know, kind of catacorne, there's an RSF-1 and then over-embedded in the RSFE. But if you look at the development, I guess it'll be to the west, that's RSFE. Is that right? Back towards?
It is.
There. The yellow stripe is there. I guess that's to the west, to the west there, where it's showing that kind of geographical-looking development there. When you actually look at the size of the lots in there, very few of those. A lot of those are non-conforming for RSFE. And so that's the struggle that you get in these areas is once you get, once you get a zoning classification in there that starts easing in density. And I mean, I can see where this is, this is being, you know. I mean, I'm not saying that you can't support the request. I'm not saying I wouldn't support the request. I'm saying that this is how, this is what the challenge is whenever they come into zoning and they choose RA for everything when they know good and well it ain't RA. Okay? And so I really feel like that if these areas had wanted to, couldn't go back, I mean, I wouldn't in that arena, but if it's RSFE, it should be 80,000 square feet, which is more fitting in with the area. RSF-1 is 30,000 square feet. So this is one of those situations where, you know, we had a real controversial case a month ago, but there was no RSF-1 around it. This one actually has some RSF-1 that touches it. So I might be rambling to some people, but a few, you're nodding your head. You know what I'm talking about. This is how it creeps in, and this is why we get so much flack about density. So I'll rest my case because I might have twisted that all up. I wasn't even really planning on saying anything about this one, but it just come out. Thank you.
All right. Open up the public hearing on this case?
Mr. Chairman, we had no one sign up for this case.
How many?
Nobody.
Nobody? All right. Anybody that came in late that did not sign up for this case that wants to speak on this case? Yes, ma'am? You want to come up here? Do you want? Oh. I truly understand, I understand. State your name, sir. That way we know who you are.
I'm James Robbins. We own the 80 that's right below it to the south. Kind of concerned with that much development in such a small area. As far as runoff of the water, the amount of people that you're going to put right there, right on top of us. You know, I mean, I'm just concerned. And they have no plans, like we saw in the other proposal, where, you know, they said exactly what they were going to do with it, you know? Are they going to put 70 house trailers right there next to our 80? You know, that's just my concern, you know, with no framework to work with what they're doing. You know, I mean, it's kind of, it's our question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry, you go ahead. Jay, would you speak to that about the subdivision process on this?
Yes, ma'am. So this, unlike the previous case, this is not a PRD. So this is just a straight zoning case. So what we're looking at is, like you mentioned earlier, is land uses and intensity of uses. So the RSF-1, as shown in the staff report, that allows a 30,000-square-foot minimum lot size. So this is, you know, a 40-acre track or so. So, you know, it's not going to be incredibly dense. It does fit in the character of the area. As far as any kind of, you know, circulation and stormwater runoff, that all comes in at the subdivision phase. If and when they submit a subdivision plat that'll go to the planning commission, they'll have all the details about how they handle stormwater and traffic and those things. And all those have to meet our requirements. As you all know, we did some significant upgrades to our stormwater requirements in our subdivision regulations. So it actually now requires a reduction of pre-development runoff.
I know we're still in the public hearing, but since there was a concern. This is just a rezoning. Once they start to want to use it in a different capacity than what it's used in right now, that's the process where I would encourage you to be very engaged because we have some new subdivision regulations in place. And they can't make a lot size smaller than 30,000 square feet, which is almost three-quarters of an acre. So I would just encourage you to be engaged in that process. But we have put extensive new regulations in place to keep these developments to the standard that we feel like are important to the quality of life of Bowlin County. So that's another process that doesn't come through this, it goes through the planning commission. So this is just changing it from green to yellow. But I mean, it's rural agriculture. And that's what I said earlier, was that I feel like when this became under zoning, if something was being used for rural agriculture, which this probably was, I see a Grady Pond on it, whatever. And that's probably was the right classification. But right next to it, you've got RSFE. And there's a lot of non-conforming lots in there based on our current RSFE, which is 80,000-square-foot minimum. So you're really not asking somebody to change the use of adjacent property that would even be much different than what's right dad.
Adjacent.
Adjacent, yeah, yeah. So that was my whole point and mentioned in my comments earlier. And a lot of times I feel like when I say some of this stuff, I confuse more than I enlighten. But lived in the world I lived in, this stuff is just all over, you know? So thank you. Hope I didn't confuse you even more. And it's so, well, happy to have conversations outside of this meeting, but this is just to change the use, not subdividing it or anything like that.
And I would just add to that, if and when they apply for a subdivision permit, it's another public hearing at planning commission. And being that you're adjacent property owner, you will go certify a letter saying, this is going to be heard. You can come to that meeting and speak, and see what's been.
And I speak with people all the time about these kind of situations. So please don't hesitate to contact my office and be happy to talk to you when, once this landowner decides to do something different. Okay?
You want to come? Since the public hearing's still open.
Yes, sir. Good morning, my name's Aaron Collins. I'm with SC Civil. We're the development firm looking at this piece of property. Full disclosure, we did submit drawings of what we anticipate doing here on this. I mean, I've got a plat ready. It's basically nine 1-acre lots.
That's not what we're here for today.
Yeah, I understand. I understand, we're just here for the rezoning. But, you know, if the public, if they want to see what we have drawn up, we're not proposing some super-dense development here on this site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for explaining that. Anybody else that wants to speak on this case? All right, close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the Wolf Creek Industries.
Last one.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve case number Z 25-29. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Corey, I guess you've got the next one too.
I do. All right, this is case Z 25-31, the Davis property. Their request is to rezone from RA to RSF-1. Here's the location of the property within the county. It's located south of County Road 16 and west of Sherman Road in the Foley area. This is in Planning District 21. The total acres is about 2 acres. And their request is to rezone to residential use. And just as a little background, this property was a part of a family division a few years ago. In terms of public comments, staff has not received any letters or emails supporting or opposing the request. Here's the subject property image as well as the adjoining property images. Here's the locator map and the site map. The adjacent zoning is all rural agriculture. And the adjacent land uses include agricultural, some vacant, and then residential. In terms of the staff analysis, Planning District 21 adopted zoning in 2009. There have been some minor changes in local conditions. Areas about a mile from the subject property have transitioned to more of a residential use from agricultural. And the future land use map designates this area as rural, agricultural, or low-impact development potential with homes on large lots. development potential with homes on large lots. Staff's recommendation of this rezoning request is approval.
Okay.
Okay. So this, I do... Since this is not the public hearing yet, this parcel was... I was contacted about this parcel. I'm not sure if it was actually an application before, but I believe it was about a 40-acre... It's about a 40-acre or part of a 40-acre family subdivision. And if you look at the staff report map, it only gives us... The one that you're showing up on the screen, which is on my screen right here, it only shows us a glimpse of that area. And if we were to zoom out on that, which I have on my map right here, and you put the overlay of the county zoning on there, you would see that, yes, there is some development in that area, but it's not contiguous or catty cornered, whatever word you want to use to that. It is... Would have... This would be a leapfrog rezoning, or whatever you want to call it, a spot rezoning. I can see where you might consider it and in support of your approval recommendation. I can see where you could see where it might go either way, but I think if we did a little bit of a deeper study into this, as I believe this came into zoning around 2009, and I think the intention of the area was to... Again, this is so similar, but yet a little bit different than the one we just saw, where they just blanket a bunch of RA out there. But this was not nonconforming lots or anything like that for RA in the past. This was a farmed piece of property. There is farming going on around this property. I spoke yesterday to the adjacent property owners across the street, which I believe would be the Cleverdons. I don't know if they farm it or own it. I think they own it because he said he got a notification in the mail. And they were highly against this changing for more dense property. And so what I see here is that when you do a family subdivision, you don't have to abide by the minimum three acre on a rural agriculture. You can go as low as two acres. And so this properties that are on County Road 16, I looked at the dimensions of this lot, and I believe it's about 87,000 square feet, which is... Exceeds the 80,000-square-foot minimum threshold for an RSFE. I think that this area, if it's going to transition from farming, which I believe there may be... I've not been down there and physically looked at this, but there may be some construction already going on on some of these other lots. But this is where family subdivisions get to bypass the... Because it's state law, and they have the right to do that based on state law. But they have the ability to kind of go beyond what the intent of a family subdivision was statute, what it was put in place for. But it's legal. It's kind of like tax avoidance versus tax evasion. This is like tax avoidance. But this is like subdivision avoidance, in my opinion. I know those of you don't know, I'm a CPA. But so where I see this is, is that if we were to change this, then this gives an opportunity for someone to have subdivided property outside of the normal subdivision regulations, totally legal. But now you want to take a minimum two-acre parcel and turn it into a minimum of 30,000 square foot. So therefore, you're going to just start that trend of more density all in this area that's not technically experiencing as much density. Because if you look at that... If you look at the overall map, you'll see this parcel down below it that is given a... What's that classification down there on that?
It's RSF1.
Is it RSF1? Okay. But that was done... That was done like in a long time ago. It wasn't... I don't even know if that's been done since the zoning was in place there. Looking at some of the property tax changeovers, it might have even been done prior to zoning. And that was one of the reasons why people in these areas, they don't want to see all these dense subdivisions and things happening. And I just think that this is a case where they don't have contiguous RSF1. I believe if this would have been a request for an RSFE, they don't even need it because they already where they need to be as far as that. You can build a house on rural agriculture, so it's not like you can't use your property to do that. So I just feel like that this is a turning point for this area, and if this would to be looked at as an... I mean, I could see where it could go. I could see where staff would say either way. And I really hate when we have a full approval recommendation on something like this, when we need to see a broader picture. And this is not personal. I spoke to you and the staff prior to this. But we're elected to look out for the people of Ballin County, and that's what I'm trying to do. So, okay, I guess nothing else.
All right. Open up the public hearing on this case.
Mr. Chairman, we have one person signed up, Richard Davis, who's an agent for the applicant.
Come on up, Mr. Richard.
Thank you, I'm Richard Davis. I'm a local real estate lawyer. I'm here today on behalf of my daughters, who own this property. And Ms. Underwood, I've listened carefully. I understand the concerns. I understand the nature of leapfrogging and that there's a lack of fiscal contiguity. But to divide this 87,000-square-foot lot into two lots, and I know we're not here on subdivision, but that's what... That's well more than two acres. So this is... Doesn't result in high density, and I don't see this respectfully as beginning a trend of what a lot of my clients would like to do, 50-foot lots and 60-foot lots. It's just it's difficult to take this property and put two homes on it because of the... Actually, because of the side yards at the building setback. And that's why we're here. So again, I respectfully ask that you follow the staff's recommendation. I understand your concerns, Ms. Underwood.
I think I stated them clearly.
Thank you.
You did.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Anybody else that came in late that wants to speak on... Speak about this case? All right. Close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve case number Z25-31, Davis property rezoning.
All right. Got a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion. They get it to the vote.
All right. Got a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Neat.
Opposed.
All right. Two-two.
Failed.
So the motion failed. Ms. Corey, you must have did all these cases. Good gracious.
Just this three.
This three?
All right. This is case Z2532, the Woolley property. The request is to rezone from RSFE to B1. Here's a location of the property within the county. The property is located on the east side of State Highway 181 and north of Twin Beach Road in the Fairhope community. This is in Planning District 37. It's approximately two acres, and their request is to rezone for commercial use. There were no letters or emails supporting or opposing this rezoning case. Here are the adjacent property images, the locator and the site maps. They have RSFE zoning to the north and south, and then Fairhope city limits to the east and west with residential land uses surrounding the property. In terms of the staff analysis, this is one of our newest zoned districts. It was zone... Adopted zoning in July of '22. Like I mentioned earlier, the majority of the surrounding uses are residential, but we can see commercial uses to the north and south, less than a half a mile from the subject property. The future land use map designates this area as a moderate development potential. And we also see that the property is bookended by activity nodes. We see a neighborhood center to the south and an urban mixed-use center to the north, and they support the rezoning request. So staff believes this commercial request complies with the land uses as well as the master plan. And staff's recommendation of this request is approval.
Commissioners, any comments from the staff or any questions? All right. Hearing none? Open up the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, we have one person signed up, Don Wheatley.
All right. Good morning.
My name's Don Wheatley. I'm in the Firethorn subdivision, right behind this lot we're talking about. I've been there about five years. I'm not opposed to anything that, you know, progress or anything like that. But this is going to be one business lot there that's... Everything else is residential. And one day, it may be a strip mall on all of that. But I've talked to the people back that are south of him. They have no intentions of going anywhere anytime soon. One guy just completely remodeled, almost looks like a new build on the third lot away from there. That street is extremely difficult to get in and out of right now with the two lanes. So one day, when they widen it, that would be a good time to be a business property or anything like that. And I'd just like to see it remain residential.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else that came in late that wants to speak on this case? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I didn't register to speak.
That's all right. Come on up and speak.
Just to clarify our...
Tell us who you are in that way.
I'm Chris Dean.
All right.
And I'm trying to purchase the property. And originally, because it does look residential, we... I was going to pass, but right down the road is DC Lawns, got a beautiful place. And, you know, we have a similar business. It's just we're a low-volume business, only have about 10 trucks. And we load plants, pavers, bricks, blocks, in and out to service the Gulf Coast daily. You know, our plan is to pretty much refurbish the house, paint it white. Aesthetically, it will look great. It's already got a privacy fence around it. We're not, you know... We're not going to disturb or disturb the neighbors more than... The neighbor beside us actually has a bigger warehouse than I think we're going to want to put up. But long story short, aesthetically, I think it's going to be a big improvement. We're not a big company, and we just need a lay-down yard to load, and we're going to fix the house up and make it look nice if it's approved. Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion. We approve case Z25-32, the Woolley property rezoning.
All right. Got a motion to approve?
I'm just looking at it.
All right. Got a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. All right. Case number Z25.
All right. This is a request to rezone. The Brantley property, they're asking to go from RSF2 to B2. The subject property is located in Planning District 15, east of Pollard Road and north of County Road 64. It is currently zoned RSF2, and they are asking for B2 Neighborhood Business District. And the property is about one acre. Here's the locator map. You can see it's surrounded... To the west is the city of Daphne. To the east, you have RSF2 and B2. This one parcel has two zonings on it. It already has some B2, and they're asking for the remaining part to be rezoned to B2. Here is the Flume map. The subject property is in District 15, which was zoned in August of 2006. There's been many annexations around this area and various rezonings. The future land use map does designate this area as having high-density development potential. Staff has recommended approval of going from RSF2 to B2.
Can you put that picture back up there where it shows the pink...
Yes.
Is it the... Like what you got outlined in blue, is that a lot?
That's the... Yes. That's the whole tax parcel. It looks like common property lines have been moved, so that's why there's two different zonings.
Because you got that big spot behind it there. I mean, on the satellite view, it looks like some trees and stuff, and there's a house behind there, so... I was just confused.
Looks like it's an easement or something.
Yeah. The property to...
But the property line was what was...
To the east is one large parcel, and it also has the two zonings of RSF2 and B2.
Okay. I just couldn't see it because of the way the blue is on the top of it. So is that... Like if that blue was not there, is there a red line under it, like on the satellite picture?
Correct. Yes. It has that blue line as one tax parcel number.
I just now found it. I just found it. I'd just like to make a request that y'all give us a little bit bigger map.
Okay.
Because I'm having to go... Give me a whole page of a map. I'm having to go back and forth, back and forth. And I did that prior to the meeting, but while I'm sitting here and give the public hearing process the true evaluation that it needs. So thank you. All right. I found it on the map. I see where it is. That is a complete parcel. But, you know, what I'm saying is that it almost looks like you're just drawing it out of a piece of parcel, the way it looks on the map. And maybe I'm the only one sees that, but if it confuses me, that's... That might be okay.
All right. Open up the public hearing.
We had no one sign up for this.
Is anybody that wants to speak on this case, please come up. Please tell us your name.
I'm Sean Odom from GMA Engineering. I'm here representing Mr. Brantley, the owner of the property. And what the... To try to answer your question, Commissioner Underwood.
It's answered.
Oh, okay. All right. I just wanted to clarify a little bit. The property behind there is owned by Mr. Brantley, and he's basically trying to rezone this. Right now, he leases a property for his business down in Silver Hill. So trying to avoid a hour drive every day just to get to work. He wants to build a small lease building on the property in order to be able to relocate his business there.
Well, that's not why you rezon property. It has to have a compatible use component, which is there.
Yes. Yeah. But the use will be compatible with B2.
I'm good.
Yeah. So just wanted to clarify in case anybody had a question.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else that... Anybody that did not sign up for this case wants to speak on this case? All right. Close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion. We approve this application.
All right. Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Ball? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
All right. We go to other staff recommendations? Nothing? All right. We got the public comment. Anybody here that wants to speak?
Yeah, there's one person signed up. David Wiggins.
Come on, Mr. David.
We're going to be the last ones here. Thank you, Commissioner, for the opportunity to bring this to you guys. This has been going on since December. David Wiggins, I'm sorry. Should have announced that first. David Wiggins, my wife, Kim, here. We live in Daphne on 181, on basically the corner of that and Pleasant Road. I have seven acres right behind there. Back in December, I think it was, the county put in two giant culverts. And really, this didn't affect me until my whole yard or my whole property flooded from that. So this has been an ongoing thing to try to get resolved. I got pictures of this. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation like all these developers have, so I'm just a simple homeowner over there. But the county, I will say that I've been working with Commissioner McKenzie. But the county, I will say that, been working with Commissioner McKenzie, thank you very much, you've been putting right on point. We got storms coming up, so, and I got pictures of, of the last storm that came through, basically flooded my whole property, and I can share this with you guys to show you. But my question was, and I keep hearing in the meeting here, stormwater runoff. When something like this goes on, when you bring water from one side of the road to the other and affect properties, does the homeowners have to know that, or is that something you address and say, "Look, this is what we're doing"? I mean, put yourself in my shoes. This isn't just a small little thing. These are two big culverts that were put in. The worst part of it is the riprap is, and I understand, I grew up, my dad was county road department. The riprap, when the water came through there, just literally washed all this out, so it's really caused a, a major flooding in my property. All I'm asking is to get these culverts resolved or before we go into hurricane season, because that's going to be a mess. This actually came up all the way to my driveway, almost came to my house, so I'm asking before my house gets flooded to, you know, kind of plead with you guys, but I don't...
What's that?
Where's your property at?
27073 State Highway 181.
Okay, you're actually on...
Yes, ma'am.
Are you on the east or west?
I'm on the west side.
West side of 181.
The seven and a half acre.
Just north of the, of the storage buildings.
Okay, I found you.
Yeah. And what's happening with that being on Pleasant, all that water from that, that south side is just literally coming across, and two big culverts, so, and I will say, one of the, one of the guys here, Mark, I'm sorry, Mr. Mark, he did cut off one of the culverts, and I still got a giant culvert sitting there that's still bringing that water over. I know, like the saying is, one culvert's still enough to bring water to me, so, you know, I'm just, I'm pleading with you guys to try to get something resolved, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. David.
Mark, can you come up and tell us about what's going on with this?
Yeah, several months back, I went and met with Mr. Wiggins, and we, we had worked with, there's a property between his property and Pleasant Road, and we had worked with that property owner. There's a pond on their property, and he wanted to see that water come in to kind of help keep that pond rejuvenated, and what happened in the, some of the heavier rain events we had, it's actually overfilled that pond and overtopped and gone into Mr. Wiggins' yard. So we have secured a drainage easement with another location that has a, a large pond, and we're currently designing to convey that water to a new location. So in the interim, what we did is we plugged one of those pipes to reduce the amount of water that's going to that location. So, and we, we've been working with them, keeping them in the loop, and let them know how we're progressing on that, but we just recently got a vote from the, the property owners. It's a, is a church that has a very large holding pond, and we're going to utilize that to help with the stormwater.
Let me ask you this, does the pond have all the water it needs in it?
Which, which?
The one that the pipes are fueling the water to?
Yes, it, it...
Why can't we plug both pipes?
Well, it's, if we plug them, it's, it'll just overtop the road, but, I mean, we can plug the pipes, and it was in that condition before.
Were these pipes, how long have these pipes been there before the upgrade?
Not quite a year yet, maybe.
So there were no pipes there before?
There were no pipes before, and the road would overtop, and we had a house on the other side of the road.
Yeah, but his yard didn't fill full of water.
Yeah, the backyard filled up when the, the water came in, and when that, we're talking about the April event, we had a lot of rain, and it overtopped the adjacent pond to the roadway, and then it overspilled, it spilled over into his pond and then filled it up as well.
So is there, you said there, is it that, the Baptist church on the south side of the road, just a little bit to the west?
Little bit to the west, yes, that's the group we're working with.
And so I know we've been looking throughout the county for regional detention, but I guess this was probably the intent, but maybe it wasn't quite right when y'all were using private property owner to kind of...
Yeah, this is, this particular area is pretty challenging with stormwater in general because it's, it's very flat, so headwaters of multiple drainage basins, and so you've got a lot of grady ponds, and the area in his backyard is a, is a grady pond, and the neighbor had what looks like an old grady pond, so we're going to work the water to the west and get it to the, the Baptist church's detention pond. They've been great to work with us, and right now, we're just designing the ditch so we can start setting the grades.
Divert it across the street?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So it won't, when we, we have the ditches cut and we can take it to the west, we'll plug both of those pipes. That was the intent, and that's what we've made to Mr. Wiggins, and I...
There was no intention, I know these guys are great, and so hopefully they'll keep working with you guys.
Can I add one thing to that?
Go ahead, come up to the, I'm sorry, you were supposed to say that.
I've never had issues with that until the culverts came in. Even when Sally, Sally came up toward this water line, just with this right here, I can leave you with it.
No, 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 what I'm hearing is, is that they intentionally diverted the water, but it was more than they intended. Is that a good way to put it?
I'm asking if both the culverts can be closed off right now, because we're got a storm coming in, we got that, that tropical storm coming in.
They have lessened the chance of rain, though.
But see, every night that that comes in, I have to think about, is this going to flood my house? Is this going to flood? And we don't know, because that storm could stay over us and do like Sally. I never, even with Sally, never had water in the house. So to have this much water, that was a lot of water that's coming from that south side.
Okay, well, from what I'm hearing, this is the first time I've heard of this.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is that the road was overtoppling with water, which is very, very dangerous, but if there's some kind of mechanism to, to, to help, you know, prevent, until we can get the, the road, the, the water diverted to the south, because you, I guess what I'm hearing is, is that your intention was, is to keep the road from being dangerous, is that right? Because water was coming over the road?
Yeah, what was motivating was twofold. On one, we, we did have the road overtop of that location, and we also had the upstream resident as well was having flooding issue because there was nowhere for the water to go, and so we had worked with years hoping to secure an outfall for this pipe, and, for a pipe, and to put onto the road, and with the new, we had a new owner of the property between Mr. Wiggins and Pleasant Road that was willing to work with us, and so we worked with that owner, and unfortunately, you know, when that, we got those really heavy rains this past year and the year before, we've, we've had some overtopping into his pond as well, so we're, we're working to address that.
Okay, so is there an option to plug that one now?
Yeah, what would it cause if we did plug?
What's the potential?
There's a potential for a home flooding on the upstream side as well as overtopping of the road, but we had that condition for many years, so, I mean, it's, we're, we're expediting the design of that ditch.
Of the south, south.
Yeah, to try to get that water, and then the other, the other benefit of that is the ditch itself, if we're able, and when we're able to convey it to the west, will actually store a lot of water in and amongst itself, so it's going to really help the whole region.
And honestly, we have a lot of places around the county that are like this because we're so flat, and, and I live in an area where it's very much like that myself, but...
I can say the water's never come across the road until, Sally, it came across the road. Up until then, it does not come across the road, I can tell you. Come there... I get it, that's a one-time event. It's not, it's not, it's not, we had a lot of problems.
Well, my question is, how quickly does it go down? Okay, because like, in my area, water topples 34 all the time on that culvert on the east side of Davidson 34, but it, it quickly goes down. I mean, it's not there hardly any time, because there is, you know, so that, that would be the thing, is how quickly does the water go down when it topples the road, or is it a place where you'd have to cut the work, you know, the, the road, do you have to close the road, would be my question? Have we ever had to close the road because we had water topple that road?
Well...
And that may not be a question you can answer off the top of your head.
It's not what I can answer, but knowing that...
So would y'all just look at that?
Yeah, absolutely.
That, that would be what I would ask, just look at that and see what we can do, because we would never, ever, ever want to cause you problems, because I know what it's like.
That's right.
The last point, now, the home there, that we're talking about, the, on the south side, that honestly, guys, that's a flood house, it's been four times flooded, so the person that bought it, I mean, they actually tried to...
Well, we just talking about you right now.
Well, I don't want to be, you know, because if it was the other way in return...
Because I have no idea about that.
I wouldn't want that going to somebody, so I try to keep mine.
Well, we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. David. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Anybody else on public comments that wants to come up and speak? All right, press questions? I don't see nobody from press. Taylor, you want to say something? I had to call you. Commissioner comments, who wants to go first? Anybody? Commissioner Ball, you?
Yeah, sure. I've just got a, a couple of things, of course, definitely, all what we're doing with our staff, and thank you for putting the agenda together and planning the zoning staff for all the work that's going into these things now that we are hearing, so these public hearings are, are something else, and a lot goes into it, as Commissioner Underwood said, you know, a little bit more in-depth maps and stuff like that would help us out. Thank you, Frank, for, and the Highway Department, for not only the 30-Q program and, and the progression with that, but introducing us to our new parks, and Recreation's Director. Looking forward to working with him. I just got a couple of things that I want everybody to keep on their minds. I think the last time I checked, we haven't been back in a meeting since this happened, but on July 4th, a couple of things happened. We had the Texas flood event that has claimed at least 134 lives now, so I think, and I know it touched our administrator's heart over there, as he has put his feet on those grounds over there before, and nothing like this, I think, has ever happened, so we need to continue to our prayers for those victims over there, and pray for the relief efforts to, to recover everybody's missing loved ones that are, are still not accounted for. Same day, you know, 4th of July, was a, was a big weekend at a, at a fun spot in Baldwin County that's known to many local natives as Pirate's Cove. I have been a part of the Pirate's Cove family since the early 80s, when we had a little vacation hole down there when I was growing up, and Ms. Aleen Mueller passed away on 4th of July, and she was a staple figure of that community as being one of the owners, along with her husband, back in the, I can't even remember, Skip, when that place started, but a long time ago. So I just wanted to continue prayers for the Mueller family, and is there undergoing a great loss, a person that will be missed by many people, so that's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank the staff for, you know, getting our agenda together, and also thank Rhonda for her years of service, and, you know, I think we had a very good, productive meeting today with everything that was going on, and just thank everyone, and, you know, stay safe, and let's hope, see what happens with the little depression that they're supposed to be coming into the Gulf. We don't know for sure, but, you know, just be very vigilant with it, you know, talking about rains, you know, we're, we're going to be probably getting some of that, you know, it's two to five inches, I think, is what they had predicted along the coast, so, you know, just be careful, you know, and thank everyone for what they do.
I guess I'm next to last. Okay, I just want to thank the staff again, ditto everything everybody else has already said, and the reason we have our meeting on Wednesday was, a few of us went to the National Association of Counties Conference and didn't get back till yesterday, but I just want to say that any time that I travel outside of Baldwin County or Alabama and I see other areas, I'm just so thankful every time that I touch ground, get, well, landed in Pensacola, but when I drive and get back over here into Baldwin County, there is, this is paradise, guys. To see what you see in, in, in other areas and to know that we are, I feel like we're leading edge in a lot of areas, and then be able to network with others and to only improve what we're doing here, when you have discussions with people from all over the United States and you see the things you see, and we don't have the problems that major big cities have, and just to see the, the homeless drug addicts that are just on the streets in Philadelphia just blew my mind, and I just hope and pray that we can continue to stay on top and be proactive and not have to experience what these kind of places are. But on a second note, that's like part of the birthplace of this country, and we're gearing up and celebrating the 250 anniversary next year for the semi-quintcentennial, I think I got that right, and to see where it started, and to be able to take an hour or two and go over there and see the, the Independence Hall, to see the Liberty Bell, to see the, where these things started, and to know that we live in America, and I'm so proud to live in America, but when I get back to Alabama, I'm like, guys, this is paradise, and that's what we're here for, is to keep serving the people, and these things are hard. These zoning cases are, I will reiterate it, is the hardest part of doing this job, and it's not easy, and it's not easy keeping a balance on it, and the ridicule and the criticism is going to happen, I mean, but I just want people to know that it is not easy, and we do the best job we can, and I appreciate staff for all that they do in answering my questions, and I don't know if anybody besides staff and the couple people that slept here, I think everybody's staff are connected to staff that's still here, but maybe somebody will hear this and know how much that, that we, all of the commissioners I know, I'm not speaking just for myself, really care about Baldwin County, and we are doing some things here that other counties only dream that they can do, because they don't have the unity, they don't have the resources, and the good competent staff that we have, so thank you.
Just say thank you to the staff, y'all know that. Thank you for putting this agenda together, thank you for helping me getting this together. Next, our next meeting will be in August, first week in August, and I just, teachers will be back at school, kids will be coming back to school pretty soon, so just, please, pray for the teachers and the kids and everybody that's going to get on the roads, make sure they get there safe. This is something that, please pray for me, too. My daughter is fixing to be 16 this coming up weekend, she's going to be on the road, and so if y'all want to donate to the McKenzie Fund to get her a car, but anyway, I just want to say thank y'all, and to the Baldwin County residents, please be safe. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
We are adjourned.